So again, thank you for coming to the public hearing, the irrigation water rate change. The background of the rate changes that HRS 162-22 requires that the Department of Ag established irrigation and irrigation system revolving fund. The irrigation system revolving fund is used to operate and maintain the irrigation system. The irrigation system revolving fund should be self-sufficient and supported by water delivery fees, acreage assessment, and legislative appropriations. AJR 4-157-22 allows the Board of Agriculture to establish irrigation rates and charges. Currently, the irrigation system revolving fund is not self-sufficient. The irrigation system revolving fund is subsidized by other funds like the general fund. The last time the irrigation system rates and changes were established by the board was during the period between fiscal year 2006 to 2011. A water rate study was completed by DOA in 2019. So in that water rate study, we examined the current revenues and expenditures to date and what water rate that would allow the system, irrigation system revolving fund to be self-sufficient. We looked at four different scenarios. Scenario one, all program expenses covered by revenues. Scenario two, all program expenses covered by revenue excluding the additional labor in the other funds. Scenario three, all program expenses covered by revenues but a phased increase. Scenario four, no rate change. We presented these findings to the Board of Agriculture and the Board approved that ARM could go and do a public hearing for scenario two. So what's next after this public hearing? Following this public hearing, ARM will address all testimony and present findings to the Board of Agriculture. The findings will be posted on the DOA ARM D website. And we will let all our customers know through their water bill when it's posted. ARM D will also in the future requests from the Board of Agriculture to present the rate change to the Small Business Regulatory Review Board. ARM D will respond to the Small Business Regulatory Review Board questions and comments. And eventually ARM D will ask, request authorization from the Board of Agriculture to submit the rate increase to the governor for approval. So the misconception is that there's still a long ways to go with this rate change. It's not going to happen next month at the next board meeting. We still have several different steps. I anticipate addressing testimony for this public hearing to take a while. And then scheduling with the Small Business Regulatory Review Board will also take some time. So it's not going to happen right away. So the purpose of this public hearing is for testimony. The following procedures, the following is the testimony procedures. So. Testifier. Their testimony, the moderator will interrupt the testifier when there are 30 seconds left in the testimony as a reminder to start closing their testimony. Testifiers will be muted at two minutes and the next testifier will be announced. We will alternate between the in-person testimony here at DOA and the testimony on Zoom. Person on Zoom who want to testify, please click on the raised hand icon at the bottom of the screen to signal that they want to testify and will be taken in the order of their raised hand. Testifier shall provide their name and the irrigation system that services their farm or their and the organization they represent at the beginning of their testimony. We'll try to get through as many testifiers as possible until the 7:00 PM closing. I would strongly suggest that written testimony be submitted either via fax and the numbers on the screen or via email at hdoa armed at hawaii.gov or mail it to Ag Resources Management Division, care of Department of Agriculture, 1428 South King Street, Honolulu, 96814. Especially if we don't get through all the testifiers, something as simple as your name and your organization or your irrigation system and whether you and why you oppose or the rate change.
Yeah, your Zoom crashed, but we'll be back in a second.
Okay. I can look at the screen.
Zoom's laptop crashed, but the meeting is still going. I'll stop your sharing.
And so if these guys are going to speak, you can line them up. Yeah. And then. Dennis, you're set. And that's John.
And it's all clear that you got these and the online please alternate.
I guess, how do you guys do this?
Okay. Right now, only one.
And Kirk, I have a written testimony here from another one of our members at last minute. So can I have four minutes or just two minutes for mine?
Yeah, and then you can come back.
So please.
Yeah, we're ready.
Yeah. Your name, your organization, and your irrigation system.
Good, good evening, Board members and Chair Hurd. I am Tim McCullough of TR McCullough Farm, a 52-year resident and past farmer within the Lollomelo Farmlots, Waimea, Hawaii. And I am attending on behalf of our own as well as our 25-plus Lollomelo Farmlot Association member interests who have submitted a written testimony dated July 25th. Our testimony contains 20 signatures representing 31 farmlots consisting of 450 to 500 acres of diversified agricultural commodity production destined to state of Hawaii consumer markets. My first point tonight, water rate increase proposal. Our testimony of opposition to DOA's Agricultural Resource Management Division's 61 cents 122% increase proposal is clear and supported by our attached history exhibit indicating total water increases over 40 years as 42 cents or $1 per year, as well as the department's Hawaii Administrative Rules, Chapter 157/21, rate, fee, and charge schedule where it is stated. The Board may adjust base rate water toll charges by no more than 2 cents per 1,000 gallons of irrigation water delivered once each fiscal year. Is that not being heard?
Oh, no, we didn't hear you.
Our testimony respectfully contains a counterproposal that more favorably incrementally allows those follows those of your ag water subscribers are historically accustomed to and as reflected within our history exhibit, all conforming within DOA's rules. If allowed to pass as proposed, Hawaii will most certainly see further deterioration within its diversified agricultural communities. Delinquencies, the Lollomelo Farmlot Association subscribers have religiously settled. Time? It's a fast two minutes, folks. Good luck.
First member from online will call forward. I'm going to next call, Raish.
Hello? Hello, can you hear me? It looks like you're done talking. Hello, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. So my name is Gracie Washta and I represent Coffees of Hawaii in Molokai. And we're with the Molokai Irrigation Systems and we very much protest and request reconsideration. We're looking at 122% proposed rate increase. There are small farms here on Molokai. And this is just not something that we can afford, given especially the most recent past that has occurred with COVID and then now coming on to the Maui fires and all. And you know, we've been, we were so struggling. Components of us trying to have our business and be surviving. And I know that the Department of Ag is in place to help us, small farms exist and prosper in the state of Hawaii to show our products. We are the only coffee farm on the island of Molokai and you know, we don't want to see all these different farms that are hurting right now go under. And having 122% proposed rate increase is something that could drastically impact us. And we would really like reconsideration on how this could be changed. I know that there's an incredible amount of federal funding available to farms and and I would hope that we could work something out where it would be a gradual increase and not something that would be so intense and hurt us right now, especially given the current situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Board members, Ms. Hurd. My name is Dennis Ariama and I'm a fourth-generation farmer in Waimea. My great-grandfather, along with my grandfather, first began farming in the Pukapu area of Waimea. In the early 1960s, my grandfather and his son started farming in the Lollomelo Farmlots and established Waimea Farming. I was born and raised on the farm, but pursued a culinary career after high school. After 24 years in the culinary industry, the last 10 years as an executive chef for Tommy Bahama, Manalani, I decided to return to farming. I understand the importance of agriculture from both the consumers and farmers' views. I have seen the decline of farmers due to the many challenges we all face. Increasing production costs, labor shortages, food safety issues, and of course, contending with the ever-changing weather conditions. The significant increase in the water rate set is being proposed would create yet another burden on our farming community. The state continues to talk about agriculture's sustainability and becoming more food self-sufficient. But to attain this goal, the farming industry must be profitable to maintain current and attract future farmers. Having a gradual water rate increase as stated within the DOA's rules, Chapter 4, 157-21, would be a step in the right direction and would demonstrate the state's commitment and support of agriculture. Thank you.
Next, I'm going to call Jill Combs. Jill, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Hello, everyone, members of the Board and Chairman Hurd. Thank you, guys, for this opportunity to provide testimony today. I just wanted to start out, you know, with saying, I think our main objective today, oh, I'm Jill Combs. I'm a non-Homestead user representing the Molokai Irrigation System User Advisory Board, currently acting chairman of that board. So I just wanted to start out today, I think what's been on all of our minds and all of our hearts lately is just the events happening in Maui and how out of respect for everyone, we just don't feel like this is an acceptable time to be taking any thought, any energy, any resources away from what needs to be happening in Mahina. So that being said, I think that's the main premise of our testimony today is that just this, this is not the time to be discussing this even. But that being said, our MIS UAB Board has met several times this year already. We've had many lengthy discussions. We've come to the conclusion that we also cannot support any increase to agricultural water prices at this time. Much like what everyone else has already said, just the general intent of Act 306 is that it's important to the welfare of the people of Hawaii that agricultural production is developed as fully as possible. We will be submitting our written testimony in full. But I think a lot of ours was based on the financial analysis done in the study. We had a lot of disagreements with that, especially as a board, we've been able to review our finances lately and it doesn't really match with what was projected. And financially, we don't feel that we need an increase at this time. And this is also not the time to be reviewed. Thank you.
Good, okay. Hi, my name is Max Bowman. My brother and I operate a 50-acre vegetable farm in the Lollomelo Ag Park on the Waimea Irrigation District. Our ability to rely on HDOA for irrigation water has supported a thriving local ag economy in our area. We do understand that increases in the cost of services like irrigation water are inevitable. Our concern is that the proposed rate hike will be too burdensome for our local farmers and will result in losses in agricultural production. Our farm, much like other local businesses, has seen dramatic rises in the cost of our inputs recently. The added expense of a rate hike such as been proposed will further strain farms such as ours who rely on the state to provide irrigation water and will make locally grown products less competitive in the marketplace, as well as reduce the overall productivity of Hawaii's ag industry. We really do view ourselves as partners with HDOA in support of our state's food system. And we feel that a stable agricultural sector relies on our mutual cooperation in ensuring farms' economic viability. And that needs to be taken into consideration with respect to the price of ag water. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call up Godfrey Akaka.
Yeah, you guys can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Godfrey Akaka Jr. I live on Hawaiian Homestead land in, on Molokai, up in Olehua. We have a farm, Akaka Homestead, representing my Ohana. And we oppose the proposal for the increase. It's kind of ridiculous, 122%. If you turn off the water, if you turn off the water, we cannot pay the water bill. Then my family going to die because we cannot have water. So it's kind of unethical for that to take place. Really, as homesteaders, we're not supposed to be having to pay for gallons of water in the first place. So basically, if you guys pass this, you guys are going to have a big, a big problem on your guys' hands. We oppose this. It's going to put us out of business. Our farms and everything that we farming is going to just dry up. It's just ridiculous. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Seward. I'm an owner of Hawaii Farming LLC. We rely upon the Waimea Irrigation System. We are the largest controlled environmental ag farm in the state of Hawaii. We operate 15 acres of controlled environment greenhouses. This irrigation water is the lifeblood of our farming operation. We respectfully oppose the drastic increase for many of the reasons that have been set forth. We are worried about unintended consequences that it will have and further increasing costs, including passing those on to consumers, which would in turn basically steer more toward mainland product as the cost of local produce becomes too expensive. It could also have a chilling effect on new farmers coming into the market with further squeezing their margins. We think a gradual increase is much more reasonable. We're also worried about the funding gap at the DOA right now. I think some of the barrel tax funds were taken away. That has also kind of caused, has triggered this drastic increase proposal. We also think that securing an increased DOA budget from the state legislature is going to be mission critical on a go-forward basis. I'd just like to highlight again, the existing irrigation systems, all five of these have been absolutely critical in supplying large-scale local produce for food resiliency and self-sufficiency for the state. And we have to maintain these. There are new proposals probably for different ideas on additional ag ditches. But I think that we have to take care and maintain our five existing ones. We will submit this written testimony following up this meeting. And we look forward to cooperating with the Department of Agriculture and the senators and representatives of the state in hopefully securing further funding for the Department of Ag and for the benefit of food resiliency for the entire state. Thank you very much.
Next, I'm going to call up LF L N.
Hello, my name is Corey McCullough. I am part of the Lollomelo Farmlot Association and I represent JCC LLC. We've been here for 52 years and I would like to continue on one of our members' previous testimony to McCulloughs. And I'm addressing delinquencies. The Lollomelo Farmlots subscribers have religiously settled their monthly DOA invoices and take very considerable note of the apparent collection delinquencies throughout the systems. And the Department of Ag's ignoring this condition, even though enforcement steps for remedy are within Department of Ag's own rules as 157-4 and feel this burden is being passed along to those who do maintain their paid account. Your ARM accounting indicates Waimea and Kehuku systems are in fact overpaid while several others within the five systems are in delinquency, one with considerably. Thank you.
Hello, Board. My name is Tim Richards. I'm a senator from the Big Island. Sit as vice chair for the Committee on Agriculture and Environment. I'm here on behalf of myself and my constituents today. Mahalo for this opportunity to testify. As our state sees food self-reliance and food security, I strongly believe it is incumbent upon the state government to support the enhancement and expansion of agricultural commodities and the economy of agriculture. I've long believed the government should be more concerned with the economy created from, rather than the fees charged for infrastructure services. I do not believe services such as water should be free. However, reasonable charges are appropriate and reasonable increases over time are important. In the current situation with Lollomelo Farmlots Association, the exorbitant increase do not fit with the stewarding of agriculture. Lollomelo Farmlots offered a reasonable, workable, thoughtful solution. The greater task is to create a master plan for agriculture water and realistically, a master plan for agriculture infrastructure as a whole. But that's a discussion for another day. I stand on this testimony and I firmly support what all of the farmers are trying to get done. I'm very willing to work with leadership in the Department of Agriculture. Leadership in the Department of Agriculture. To support the expansion of agriculture for our state and our food security. Thanks for this opportunity to testify.
I'm Tim McCullough from Lala Meele Farm Lots on the Big Island. I'm speaking on behalf of one of our members unable to uh, join us today, Justin Hirako. This is his testimony. My name is Justin Hirako and I am deeply concerned about the proposed irrigation water rate increase. Here's a little background about me and our operation. I am a fourth generation farmer. Our business began in nineteen twenty-eight when my great grandfather purchased a twenty acre parcel of farmland and Puukapu Farm Lots. Over the years, my family expanded our operation to the Lala Meele Farm Lots. Today, our farm has grown to about a hundred and forty-five acres. We grow a variety of leafy greens, including green and red leaf lettuces. Head lettuce, romaine cabbage, Chinese cabbage, mustard cabbage, broccoli and daikon. We primarily supply K T A superstores. If you are not familiar with K T A, it is a locally owned supermarket chain on the Big Island that greatly supports local producers through their mountain apple brand. Our relationship with K T A has endured for about fifty years and counting. I'm sure we are all familiar with the impacts that recent economic events have had on businesses. For farmers, we have been feeling the extreme squeeze of these economic events. The costs of everything have skyrocketed and now we face the possibility that our irrigation water rate will drastically increase as well. While our costs have gone up, we can only pass along these costs to contain. Extend to certain extent before produce originating from elsewhere in the world becomes a more cost friendly alternative and we lose competitive advantage. Thank you.
Next, I'll be calling up William.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is actually Tanya. William is my husband. But we are, um, we have our own business. It's called Kaholo Aa Farms located on Molokai. In the Hoolehua Homestead area and we've been farming for about five years, just both of us. We grow organic papayas and I believe we're the only. Two organic papaya growers in a state and both on Molokai. And so we've been already struggling with the cost of getting organic certified. And all of our inputs, it has to be approved and has to be. Um, all organic and it's um, very costly. So just to hear of this proposal, it kind of. Took us by surprise. It's such a big increase. I think it's ridiculous. Um, we were just planning to maybe increase and increase our farm and maybe grow other things, but. We have to take a step back and really look at it because. We already been struggling with trying to get organically certified. We've been three years. Certified organic. And we gotta really think about it. If that water bill is gonna increase, it's gonna be very hard on us. So. Um, we look at the D H H L. When they said that the water for the Hawaiians are supposed to be free. Um, no charge, um. Okay, well, thank you. Kaholo Aa Farms, Molokai. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call up Ipulani.
Aloha Kakko, my name is Ipulani Ma'eeh, um, and I am from Hoolehua, Molokai. As a fourth generation small scale farmer, I oppose the one hundred twenty-two percent water increase proposal. Over the last few years, I have worked diligently with my community to help foster. Um, and promote self sufficiency and sustainability through home gardens and small scale farms. This rate increase would be detrimental to new and seasoned farmers. To families who are reliant on egg water to grow their food to eat and barter. Because often store bought food and produce here is unaffordable, wilted and lack nutritional value. Growing food is our means of survival. I believe that we should be doing everything we can to help support our people, especially homesteaders. To grow more food, be self sufficient and not be reliant on the barge. Not making it more difficult to survive and alohaaina. So though I understand fees for service, I say no to the one hundred twenty-two percent increase proposed. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, I'll be calling up Dustin Fishah.
Hello, my name is Dustin Michelle, uh, resident on Molokai. And we farm a ten acre lot of kalo. And I oppose the hundred twenty-two percent. Increase of the ag water. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call up Grace Uwesita.
Um, I already spoke. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, um, I already spoke earlier. I was like the first um, Zoom person to speak.
Oh, I see. So sorry.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call up Wayne.
Hey, aloha. My name is Wayne Kawahi from the island of Molokai. I represent the Holy Homestead Association. I sit on a board as the water chair. There are over seven thousand acres of homestead land in Hoolehua and the family reside reside here, depend on the ag water. For not only businesses, but to make ends meet. But greater importance is subsistence farming, which we take very seriously here on Molokai. We oppose the water rate increase and will be sending written testimony. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Wayne. Next, I'd like to call up Nathaniel Oswald.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, first, I just want to say thank you to all the members of the board uh, for attending and setting up this meeting. Uh, my name is Nate Oswald. I represent the Molokai Farm Bureau. Um, I've already submitted written testimony. Uh, so in this case, I would actually like to testify on behalf of myself as a farmer. Uh, also, I want to give thanks to all the people who have taken time out of their day to come and testify. Uh, they all know how important water is. Without water, we have nothing. Anybody that grows food knows it. Farming is all about timing, time to plant. A time when things flower, a time when to pick, to harvest, the time to sell. Uh, this is not the time to to be raising a water rates. Um, I understand that there are input fees and costs. And things are going up in costs. We understand that because as far as we know that our inputs are also incredibly high and rising. We thank you for the services you provide. We need this water to survive. Um, and I especially think that it's important to nurture. Uh, future farms and farms that exist and and support the growth of agriculture. We we need locally grown food. Um, I don't know the exact number, but I would estimate ninety percent plus of the food that we eat in Hawaii is imported. And I would love to see a change so that it can benefit my kids, my family, uh, my community and my friends. So uh, I oppose this rate hike. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll have. Oli Woolsey.
This is uh, Oli Woolsey. Hoolehua Homesteader and represent my family, uh, the Woolseys here and. Um, Molokai MIS. Uh, I did submit written testimony, but. And hearing other brothers and sisters speak, uh. So we also want to speak on on our behalf and them. You know, we we strongly oppose the the rate increase. Uh, it would just be such a huge burden, you know, for us small farmers. When we first got our homestead thirty years ago, we were not a small farmer. We. We were a pretty good sized farm for a local, small Hawaiian family. But the cost of production, the competition with non Hawaiian farmers. Basically put us out of business. So we went back to the conventional lifestyle. But now in our golden years facing retirement, for the last few years, we've been practicing. Sustainable farming where we feed our family. Um, this rate increase will greatly burden uh, the ability for us to grow food for our family. Uh, with my wife and I uh, being retired. Um, you know, fixed incomes and that it's it's a huge burden. Uh, and so, you know, all we want to do is feed ourselves and and a rate increase like this really. Really hurt us, you know, as well as brothers and sisters uh, on the island. So we appreciate uh, your consideration and uh, and and we hope you uh. You know, you you see it the way we do and let us survive as Hawaiians on this homestead. Allah, thank you.
Thank you. I see we have a couple members of public joining us by phone. If you would wish to testify, uh, you can hit the pound and then nine. That will raise your hand to let us know that you would like to speak. Okay, I'd like to call up Kalipi.
Aloha, this is uh, Kavayola Kalipi. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Um, I strongly oppose the hundred twenty-two rate increase in our ag water. Um. Is, as everyone mentioned, we already kind of struggle um, farming uh, with farming. Um, I myself farm kalo and avocado. And it's solely me and I have about ten acres of of homestead land that I'm. Trying to farm and this hundred twenty-two increase would just. Put me out of, you know, would put me and a lot of farmers out of business and it is really ridiculous and. I don't, it's not sustainable. So we, I hope that we can um, you know, come to a better uh, middle ground and have like a slower increase. In rate and not have it, not have it skyrocket like this. Um, thank you for your time. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to bring up Noalani Joy.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm Roman Noalani Joy. I'm Hoolehua. Um, MIS user, Molokai Irrigation System user. Been on the system since nineteen seventy-eight. I've been here a long time. It says. It started out farming right now. I'm going back and my son is starting to, has a lot of interest in farming. Okay, I'm opposed to a. Uh, the proposed proposed amendment. Uh, that's what I'm opposing it. I strongly oppose the water rate change to fifty cents to dollar. It is one dollar and eleven cents, a twenty-two percent increase. To resolve an increase of state deficiency of twenty percent, twenty percent is excessive. Molokai Irrigation System has shown a surplus revenue for nine years. This conflicts with the study results. Your study is flawed and should be updated. I strongly support. Uh, no rate change or changes to four, one fifty-seven dash twenty-one. Because as written, the board may increase the base water tow charge by no more than two cents per thousand gallons of irrigated water delivered. Once each fiscal year.
Thirty seconds left.
Two cents increase is more palatable than the, than fifty-two cents as said, and. More acceptable. It says. If the increase should be done only and if the department has done everything possible to get more farmers out on the system. And to increase the system's use. To summarize, I strongly oppose the proposed amendment and I support. No changes to four, one fifty-seven, twenty-one. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call up Uncle Bobby.
Yes, uh, this is um, Bobby Alcain and um, I'm a homesteader, currently doing um. Subsistence living and commercial farming with our farmers hui. And we just started out. We've been in practice for about. Four years now as a, as a hui. And definitely we're struggling with all. The finances and the increase will definitely put us down under. We will not, we will not be able to sustain. Such a high level of increase or any type of increase at this time. So definitely I oppose it and. In reality, I would, I would rather. Get all the homesteaders together and just boycott you guys. And say we ain't paying water until you guys understand our situation here on Molokai. And make it more affordable and 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 reasonable instead of just jumping to conclusion and and increasing such a. Phenomenal rate that we're already struggling as a. Hard impact on economic uh. Area in Maui County, especially Molokai being very high in unemployability. And living a sustainable life is gonna be even more hard. Just to be sustainable. So anyway, total, total, total opposed and um. If I could, I'll rally everybody and say, better rate and we'll boycott you guys and we'll. Put it on the side, all the money on the side and then let you guys come to us. Okay, mahalo.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call up Luann Faberito.
Hi, aloha to the board. My name is Luann. I'm calling from Hoolehua, Molokai. I'm part of the Holy Hoa Homesteaders Association and strongly opposing this rate hike. I think it's a no brainer. The testimony here is so overwhelming. That I know this board is going to um, make the right decision because I have not heard one. One person testify in favors. So I would hope that you guys would take all of this mana'o and um, do right by us and not raise it. Thank you so much. Aloha.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to testify? In person? Okay, um, oh, Jonathan Jeffs.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, my name is Jonathan Jeffs. I am a second generation farmer on the island of Molokai. Managing the family farm, Akia Farms, which was established back in nineteen seventy-two. I'd just like to uh, to leave you with three thoughts, um, three things to consider. Anyone by itself would probably be bearable, but the combination is. Setting up uh, Hawaii's rural communities. For. Possibly an unbearable burden in agriculture, but. possibly an unbearable burden in agriculture, but why be increase its rates about fifty percent during COVID? The state has set into motion an increase in the minimum wage rate across the state. They made no consideration between Waikiki or our rural communities. And then third, this proposed uh, water rate increase. Um, any one of the above by itself could be workable, but the combination of three is uh, setting Hawaii's agriculture down an unsustainable path. Uh, do there need to be water increases? Eventually, yes. Something phased in, something logical, something actually thought about. Not uh, let's scare our farmers and put out a notice of a hundred and twenty-two percent increase. Um, our produce rates are not based on local cost. Our produce rates that we sell our products for is LAX plus freight to Hawaii. So we're competing on a global basis. So if Hawaii prices itself out, we've already priced our keke out of paradise with homes. Now we're headed toward pricing our farmers out of paradise with rate increases such as this. That's uh, that's all I really have to say. I want to thank you for uh, taking the time to listen.
Thank you so much. Anybody else want to testify?
Oh, Tim Little.
Tim Little?
Yeah. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Tim Little from Kalapama Kai Farms on the Lower Hamakua Ditch. And I just wanted to uh, make a comment mostly for benefit of the listeners. Uh, primarily speaking to the farmers in attendance today. Thank you to the board and all the uh, cogent commentators. A little history on the Lower Hamakua Ditch. In two thousand four, there were heavy rains which collapsed part of the ditch blocking all the distal irrigation. And as a result, the Department of Agriculture appropriately applied to receive a grant from FEMA. That grant was almost four million dollars. But a small group of town dwelling residents, one of which was on the county council, protested the ditch enclosure that that money was going to pay for to reduce maintenance costs on the ditch. And the reason was they wanted the ditch preserved in its usual capacity for its quote historical significance. The group convinced FEMA and the Department of Agriculture to abandon the federal government grant that would have enclosed and secured the ditch. Now, we ratepayers have the ditch closed down for two weeks at intervals, uh, which is really threatening our crops. And the amount of money that's being paid to use, to do these repairs is massive. So everyone on this call
thirty seconds.
should be, uh, remember that they're footing the bill for a decision that was made in two thousand thirteen at the behest of a handful of town residents with political connections that would have prevented an enormous amount of maintenance costs that are now being incurred. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll ask Donna Mitz.
Aloha. My name's Donna Mitz and I am on uh, in the Hamakua Ag Co-op lots in Pauilo. And this, like all the other farmers, this rate increase would be uh, catastrophic for our farming enterprises. And um, I really uh, appreciate what Tim Little just said. Um, that was um, crazy what happened uh, with that uh, grant money being waylaid by a handful of politically connected uh, residents. Um, we need help. The Hamakua and the whole, the farmers across the state, we need help, not, not um, not things like this uh, that would make it even harder. So I oppose a great, a rate increase at this point. Mahalo.
Thank you. Any other testifiers? I'd like to call up Whitney Velez.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm also a member with the, aloha everyone, I'm Whitney Velez. I am a member with the Hamakua Ag Co-op as well. And um, I farm three acres in the Pauilo area. Um, I've been there since two thousand twelve and uh, definitely not able to make a living farming. I'm working on planting ulu, uh, using the agro forestry model that the Hawaii ulu co-op has educated us about. Um, and at this point, you know, I have to work another full time job. So I'm just putting in whatever time I can, hoping to contribute to food security for my family and my community. Um, and it seems uh, pretty out of reach to make a profit farming as it is. So uh, I oppose the increase as well. And I'd like to just echo what my fellow um, co-op members and people in Hamakua are saying about the Hamakua ditch, like our water is also not reliable because of the situation with the Hamakua ditch. And I think that increasing rates for farmers, the state should pursue funding from federal or other state sources. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to testify? Anybody that'd like to, you can click the raise hand button at the bottom center of your screen. Oh, okay. I'll call up D M B.
Hello?
Yes, you can begin.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. Uh, my name is Donby Cora. I am on the island of Molokai with the M I S with the Molokai Farm Bureau. Uh, I wanted to say thank you very much um, to uh, Chair Hurd and to the members of the Board of Agriculture for giving us this opportunity. Uh, real quickly, I I guess, you know, I, we understand that the the irrigation system fund is supposed to be self sufficient, but it never was. And maybe it's time for us to address that. So I really appreciate Senator Richards um, coming on and please, Senator Richards, please let us help you um, and the ag committees to find ways to resolve some of these issues that we're having and and that the farmers are facing. And then I say to all the users, thank you so much for showing up. Thank you so much for testifying. But also, we need to get in touch with Senator Richards to be able to help him um, and help the state legislature and the ag committees to figure out, you know, alternatives to funding and to help H D O A um, obtain that funding or release the allocations of some of the the appropriated funding that has already been uh, put on the side but never released. Um, I do know that other states uh, spent a lot of money to support their agriculture. And I just want to uh, repeat what everybody else has said. This is not the time. Um, right now in two thousand, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, that has been the sharpest two year
thirty seconds.
farm input cost of all time. Uh, what farmers are facing is it is, it is a precedent. And right now, we, we, we need your support. The totality of the stresses that are laid upon the agricultural producers is not just a growing concern for Hawaii producers, but it's for the entire agricultural supply chain. And it's an alarming concern for all of agriculture. It is not just Hawaii that is is concerned about
you've reached your time.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Raise your hand with the button on the middle lower portion of the screen. I don't see any more testifiers. I'd like to thank all of you for showing up um, and testifying and listening to the testimony. Um, we're very appreciative. And uh, with that, I'd like to close this public hearing. Thank you very much.